Item 23, Safe Fencing Regulations.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Lisa Martinez. I'm a Business Process Specialist with Development Services Department in the Building Inspections Division. And joining me tonight is Tony Hernandez. He is a Construction Inspection Services Program Manager. And tonight, I'll be presenting Safe Fencing Regulations and Staff Recommendations. And so, I guess I use the clicker. This is my first time. All right, so Resolution Number 2021-1104-39 initiated code amendments to address dangerous fence design, including spiked elements that protrude above the top horizontal bar of a fence. City Code currently allows some spiked fence styles that compose significant risks to humans and animals. The resolution directed the city manager to evaluate requiring flat stop, flat-top styles on new fences of all lengths, applying flat-top fence requirements to all new fences of six feet tall or lower, applying flat-top fence requirements to substantial fence repairs or remodeling of 50% or more of an existing fence. Staff hosted a series of engagements and targeted outreach and to a broad range of stakeholders, including community at large, partner departments, building contracting community, community advocates, and advocacy groups. Also received input from the following boards and commissions: the Building and Standards Commission, Historic Landmark Commission, Building and Fire Board of Appeals, Codes and Ordnances Joint Committee. And feedback was focused on safety and affordability considerations and enforceability. And so, proposed amendments would be to delete Section 949-4-41, restriction on use or barbed wire fences. And the section will be relocated to Section 25-2-899. An amendment to simplify height measurement for Section 25-2-899, Section D, except as otherwise provided in this section, a solid fence constructed along a property line may not exceed a height of seven feet measured from a natural grade up. Proposed change requirements: A fence may not include spiked pickets, spiked bars, or other spiked decorative elements above the top horizontal back rail, vertical pickets above the top horizontal back rail if the vertical pickets are separated by more than two inches and less than nine inches, razor-like wire, barbed wire unless the fence is enclosing an airport or other landing area for aircraft and the use of barbed wire is required by Federal Aviation Administration Regulation, or any element that creates a substantial risk of entrapment or impalement. And Section 25-2-899H, it's a new subsection, applies to all fences constructed after the effective date of the final ordinance, all fences for which more than 50% will be replaced. Entire fence must comply, percentage determined by total linear distance of existing fence. And exemptions: fences required to comply with historic design standards, fences that are at least six feet in height and located on a property that has a non-residential use includes multifamily. Proposed change applies to fences constructed after the effective date of the final ordinance, fences for which more than 50% will be replaced, the entire fence must comply, the percentage is determined by total linear feet of existing fence. Exemptions: fences required to comply with historic design standards, fences that at least six feet in height and located on a property that has a non-residential use includes multifamily. Other requirements: A solid chain-link fence shall use knuckle selvage; a fence used as a swimming pool barrier shall comply with Chapter 25-12, Article 14, Swimming Pool and Spa Code. So the staff recommendation, there were affordability and forcibility concerns with the 50% replacement trigger, and staff recommendation is to allow property owners to maintain what they have and trigger compliance with full fence installation replacement. And so, these are fencing elements to be prohibited. And at this point, I'd like to call Tony Hernandez to help describe what you see in these images, and also to answer any questions that you might have.
The fence on the left, the, it's an impalement issue, same thing with the right, also entrapment issue, the gap is too far apart. It's not good for animals and children trying to climb it. These fences also have the same issue, the impalement issue and the gap on the, one on the left side is too wide, the gap on the right side is, would probably work because of the, of the back piece in it, other than the points on it. These fences are compliant fences. The gap on the right prohibits any kind of entrapment, there is no issue with the left And these are also fences that would be allowed, that would meet the requirement. Is there any questions that I can help you with, or?
Yeah, we'll proceed with, get through it to public hearing, then we'll do Q and A, so surely there will be questions. So please stay around. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Now we'll move on to speakers. I have Mr. David King on the teleconference. Mr. King, select star six, proceed with your remarks.
Hello, my name is David King. Thank you for your service, and thank you for considering my comments tonight. Please support the proposed safe fencing, the proposed safe fencing code amendment. It will help reduce the risk of injuries and deaths to people and animals from impalement and entrapment without decreasing security for families and businesses, and without imposing new permitting requirements. The amendment prohibits new spiked fencing that creates a risk of impalement and establishes minimum spacing distances between pickets to help reduce the risk of entrapment. The amendment does not add additional permitting requirements for residents or businesses, and does not require remediation of existing fences unless more than 50% of the fence is being replaced. Other surrounding municipalities, including BK's, Sunset City, Lakeway, and Rollingwood, have enacted safe fencing regulations to help prevent and reduce injuries and deaths from impalement and entrapment. The proposed safe fencing code amendment was unanimously supported by the Codes and Ordnances Joint Committee. Your support for the amendment will help prevent and reduce injuries and deaths due to dangerous fencing. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Ms. Julie Damian, also on the teleconference, select star six, proceed with your remarks. Ms. Damian, if you'll select star six on your phone, that will unmute you. Okay, Ms. Damian, if you want to try calling back in, we'll see if that works. Chair, if we can not close the public hearing, but go forward with this matter?
Okay, so we'll go and proceed with the Q and A. Hopefully, we'll get the speaker on here shortly. Let me know if they, if you're able to get them. Okay, let's start off with questions. Okay, Chair Cohen.
Y'all should have known this was coming. This is my bread and butter right here. Question for staff, please. Let's talk about 252899D, why the change?
Why the change?
Yes.
With the intent to create a safer fence.
I'm sorry?
Microphone on?
With the intent to create a safer fence.
So seven feet would be a safer fence than six feet?
Oh, the, the D, oh no ma'am, that is for the purpose of measurement. It's easier and more practical in the field to measure something at seven foot than as written, where you have to get a minimum of six, and not over seven feet. But that part just, it's real hard to apply in the field. If we say seven foot, seven foot is just a given, same as eight foot, it's just an easier measurement to apply.
Okay, why are we going taller? I sort of feel like, you know, in a time when we should be building communities, this is adding higher walls.
The, mostly because of the terrain. People want to see a straight line across the top of their fence. And because when the terrain is not, I mean, we're talking, you know, six to inches to a foot difference, they try to make up the difference and actually be able to close out the bottom and have a level side alignment on top of it. So that's why the code says up to seven feet.
But that, that's generally on a slope.
Yes, generally on a slope, yes.
But why not just keep it at six? Because if it's at seven now, that means even a fence on a flat terrain will be seven feet tall.
I agree, that, that's what would happen, yes.
So that's what I'm trying to, like, why? Not that I mind, it's going to be a lot less fence variances for my board, but still, it just seems like it's...
Yeah, like I say, it's, it's just an easier measurement to, to enforce, and to be able to see and work with. It's, it's why we've chosen seven feet.
That's all for me.
Who else? Okay, Mr. Conley.
Just curious, if, if adopted, these new regulations would apply to all city properties and city fencing as well?
Yes, it would.
And they would apply, okay, and so, would that entail changing existing fencing to match these new regulations, or would that be?
It's not retroactive.
It's not retroactive, so, but, but new fencing would have to comply?
New fencing would have to comply, yes.
Okay, thank you. And then, just one last question, has any thought been put into differences in cost or cost impact around new fencing regulations? Just curious.
So we're, we're talking about a fence that you've chosen to replace or restore a fence, and there's, there's going to be a cost option regardless.
Okay.
You can buy a fence at almost any rate that you like.
And my last question, and I'm not trying to overthink this too much, but was thought put into removing fencing in areas where it might not even be necessary, or?
No, that was not taken into consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? I do have, oh, Commissioner Zar, and then I'll take the next one. Go ahead.
Chair, go ahead. Chair, go ahead, and I'll come in.
Okay, real quick, I, I heard there were concerns about the, the gap between the fence post, and maybe I missed it, is there anything that addresses that risk? I saw, you know, we don't want spikes, but is there already code, or is, are we adding anything about keeping that to a maximum?
We're keeping a minimum and a maximum, we're looking at less than two inches and nothing between two and nine.
Okay, did I just miss that? Is that in the, the change? Is that included?
Hello, interrupting, Julie's on the line.
It's, um, H, Section H3.
Okay, so it's there, all right. Do, I can take a pause. Mr. Rivera, did I hear we have somebody ready to speak?
Chair, apologies for the interruption. Yes, I do have the member on the teleconference, if we want to try again.
Yeah, I would, I might have questions related to their...
No, dude, we'll do. Okay. Ms. Damian, if you'll select star six. Okay? We can hear you.
Can you guys hear me? No one was asked that, but I want to make sure. And then, can you see my PowerPoint that I put together?
Yes, just say, next slide, and we'll progress to you.
Okay. So, hello, my name's Julie Damian. So before Thursday, March 22nd, 2018, I never considered significance, importance, or even the need for laws about fencing or fences. Slide. I assumed a fence was a feature in a community that just existed and had been designed by experts who considered the safety of people, animals, and the communities the product was sold to. Slide. Sadly, I found out this is far from the, after middle son Cade died on a neighbor's load, a picket fence. Cade died less than five minutes after having a peanut butter and cheese snack at the kitchen table after school with his brothers. In less than five minutes, our lives were changed forever. Slide. Cade's head and neck became trapped between the pickets at the top of the fence. His feet were unable to touch the bottom rung of the fence once his head became trapped at the top. His legs came out from under him and he hung. Slide. Exposed picket fences have been deemed dangerous in many communities and fans, some making this change years before Cade's death. Slide. Local communities Lakeway, BK's, Rollingwood, and Sun City are some that have made these changes already. Slide. A family in the Midwest saw Cade's story and shared with me about their relatives who died while playing after church one day on her farm. Her neck was also trapped on an exposed picket fence almost 100 years before Cade died. She was about the same age as Cade as well. Slide. A local woman shared with me how her German shepherd got scared during a thunderstorm and became trapped like Cade between the exposed pickets at the top of their fence and died. People have shared stories about falling out of trees with children and requiring stitches in places that narrowly miss major arteries. A man who posts his bike stunt on Instagram posted a video at a bike park where his stunt landed him unexpectedly between the pickets of an exposed picket fence surrounding the bike ramps and courts at his local city park. If he had landed just a fraction of an inch in a different direction, that video would have ended much differently. Instead, the spokes were caught right between pickets. Another man working on a roof locally fell and was impaled down his whole entire body. He lives, but he'll never be the same. Another example is of children playing catch and landing on an exposed picket fence as they reach to catch the ball that's thrown to them. Slide. Impalement is a brutal, gruesome way to die. Animals typically struggle to get free and will rip out their insides in the process. They do not die quickly. It is not uncommon for people to post on Facebook or Nextdoor asking who can come and remove a dead or injured animal from their fence. They're very upset at the sight of the dead or injured animal. Slide. Everyone who hears about Cade says the same thing. I never thought about that, and guess what? Neither did we. That's why I'm here, talking to you today, and asking you to make a difference and help prevent future injuries and deaths with very minor but impactful changes. Slide. Fence companies have actually said that they will continue to sell and install the fence style until laws forbid it. Slide. Fence manufacturers and retailers market and, market exposed picket fences as good options for going around playgrounds, pools, and other high-traffic child and wild bacteria. Slide. I'm here tonight to ask you to please recommend that the city council adopt the proposed safe fence ordinance. This proposed code amendment has a vital and deep impact, reducing the risk of injury and death without decreasing security or fence design selection for office, Austin residents. Fence manufacturers and retailers already carry many other fence choices at comparable price points. I ask that you recommend the safe fence code amendment going to effect no more than six months after adoption, and ask that information be made available on the city website about why this is important and ways to modify a fence to make it safer. Slide. You can find more information on cadescreators.org. I would also like to thank all of the city staff members, board members, and committee members, and people who have provided feedback and helped to create what is being considered today. My family and I thank you, and future generations will thank you as well for protecting them and making the world a better, safer place. Thank you.
So I'm going to pick up those very powerful presentations. Thank you. I think, I'm trying to gauge, what we have here in front of us is a staff recommendation, and was there somebody on the Codes and Ordnances Joint Committee that can, I'm trying to figure out which of their recommendations got adopted or moved into this. Staff, can you speak to that? I know they had offered up some amendments, did we, did those make their way in to the...
What staff has recommended is that this ordinance applied to only fences that are six foot in height and less, and not apply to new fences.
Right. Okay, do, I'm looking around, do we, I know Commissioner Zar, do you, comparing this to what the, what was in, considered by Codes and Ordnances, did you guys, are there any amendments that we need to consider here that you guys felt strongly about that were not included in this draft?
Chair, there was, excuse me, one was that this should apply to historic, historic fences or historic properties, and I see that that has not been included, and we said essentially that it should apply to historic properties, but there can be a variance request that can go to Historic Landmark Commission, Planning Commission, or zoning and planning can, there can be an appeal process for that. So that's one that I see missing, and unless I'm missing something, please staff, let me know if I'm confused about something. And then, yes, I think there was a conversation about the six feet versus eight feet that I believe Commissioner Anderson, he had raised, and that I think is also not included, and I'm trying to see, I think those are the two big ones. I do see the substantial fence repairs for 50% or more is included, and then I see that there, we had an amendment on the swimming pool barrier, but I see that entire piece has been removed altogether. So the two big things that I can think of right now are really the historic exemption, and then the six feet versus eight feet conversation.
Okay, so the historic, you got, you all were wanting it to apply to historic properties unless they achieved a variance, is that...
That is correct. So we essentially said that it should apply to any historic property, and essentially, you could go to, if you wanted an exemption, you could go to the Historic Landmark Commission to get an exemption from this subsection, and that that decision could be appealed to either the Planning Commission or the Zoning and Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you. All right, and then there was some backup, I guess, I'm trying to, Mr. Rivera, there was some backup in, that you provided, how does that relate to what we're, the draft that we see in front of us?
Chair, Commissioner Lee's on end, Rivera, so yes, that is what Mr. Hernandez referenced, it applying to six feet instead of...
Instead of all fences, yes.
Instead of all fences, and then not applying to all new fences.
To only apply it to new fences.
All right. That's all the questions I have. Commissioner Maxwell, and then Commissioner Zar.
I just had a quick clarification. I'm in Zilker, and we've seen recently a lot of people actually moving to building walls, which is an unintended consequence of all of this. So I was just curious, how would that work into this, and are we maybe having an unintended consequence of people wall-building because they can get a different type of fence? I'm curious if y'all had thought about that.
It's, it's still, we still look at it if it were a fence, regardless of what type of material they use to construct that fence with.
So to, just to be, so this would apply even if it's not a fence in the traditional, as we think of it visually? The rules around a wall would actually be subject to these same changes, is that correct?
Exactly, it's still a fence, yes.
Okay, and I think the concern here, we, I see a lot of this, again, speaking of my neighborhood, that we're seeing a lot of wall-building in the front due to pools being placed in the front of yards instead of the back, so then you end up this very, and one of the questions that's been raised in our neighborhood is regarding having those walls, particularly in busy corners, because there's a lack of visibility, so that impacts traffic, fire, all of those things. Have you all considered that as part of this as well?
That is part of a transportation ordinance, they're the ones who would govern that, and they have clearance requirements at corners and things of that nature.
So we don't think that having the additional height is maybe going to, or I guess that's what I'm just curious about, if we've thought again of those unintended consequences of permitting the additional height, particularly as it comes to walls or non-opaque fencing, that that we might end up with high walls that then impact something like a traffic corner?
Yes, unfortunately, we have nothing at all that exists now that tells you what kind of materials you can use on your fence. What we have now is probably the closest that we've gotten so far.
Okay, great. Thanks for, appreciate your step, work on this.
So let's, Commissioner Zar, sorry, apologies, I skipped you. So go ahead and go now, and then Commissioner Cohen will, as our BOA chair, will let her dig into this a little more. Go ahead, Commissioner Zar.
Thank you, Chair, and I do want to thank Mr. Hernandez and for staff's work on this. Staff, I just had a question. Mr. Hernandez, can you help me understand, so if I understand correctly, this only applies to new fences, but it also applies if you do a rehab or do some kind of work that changes 50% of an existing fence, correct? I'm understanding the code correctly here, right?
The way it's written now, if you replace more than 50%, you would have to come into full compliance. Anything new would, would also be in compliance, would need to be in compliance.
I do. I appreciate that, and I think that was definitely the intention of Codes and Ordnances. And I wonder if you can speak a little bit to the historic design standards. So you essentially were saying this subsection does not apply to a fence that follows historic design standards? Can you speak to that? How, how will we sort of manage that expectation of follows historic design standards and safety? I just, I'm trying to understand how this would go into effect.
Well, I have a little to no understanding of what those actual standards are, but to my understanding, it's a specific standard that's going to provide all the guidelines it need regardless of what the, the requirement is. I couldn't really go into any detail, I just don't have the knowledge to do that.
I appreciate that. And then, I guess, just the backup that had been provided to us, I'm looking at it, the six feet is one question, and you've responded to that, and then it says, "Staff recommends that this proposed ordinance affect only new fences," and I think that we see that, I just want to clarify again that we're saying affect only new fences unless you do more than 50% rehab of an existing fence.
So that is what we're not supporting is the 50%. What staff is saying that if an existing fence already is there, that they can maintain that fence, as long as they maintain it, that they can keep it.
I appreciate that, thank you. So it is in here, but that is not what your recommendation is, I understand, I just wanted to understand that fully. Appreciate, thank you. Thank you, Chair. Oh wait, get a chair before, sorry, I still have time. I just do want to thank Mrs. Damian for her destiny here at Codes and Ordnances, for her championship on this issue, and for sharing her story and sharing the beautiful pictures of her son. I can wish nothing but love and respect for her and her family, and just thank her for her work on this. Thank you, Chair.
All right, Chair Cohen, do you have additional questions?
Yes, please. More keeps coming up. Was there any conversation about limiting the height of fences in the front of residences?
That conversation never came up, no.
Okay, so if, say, a house was not within that mandated corner area that cuts off, what is, I think it's 20 feet from the corner, like, it has to be visibility from like this side of the house, but if they're in the middle of the street and they want to put up a seven-foot fence in the front of the house?
The, the way it reads now, as it exists, it would have to be an average height of six feet, or a maximum height of seven feet.
Six on flats, seven. Was there discussion about maybe leaving it six as just a number for flat or level fences, and then seven for anything that wasn't?
That conversation didn't, didn't happen, looking at it from the enforcement side, and because we know the terrain and what people want, it makes it very, very difficult to enforce.
I would say it's probably very difficult to enforce, period, once it's built. Very rarely do we see any variances come before us where the fence has been built already, and then they're asking for forgiveness. It's usually before they build, but that's kind of my point. I guess this is... I guess this is something I can probably speak on at Codes and, or the Codes and Ordnances, right? When they take it back up again? Or is this here before us for good now?
It's out of Codes and Ordnances. So we need to make whatever changes we want now.
So if the Board of Adjustment were to ask for some amendments, would maybe someone be open to them? I know it makes things a little more complicated, and that's not what I want for our city code. But the best example I could probably give is knocking on doors for a candidate last November over on East Montoplis. And it is very clear which houses have been built recently because they all have very tall, very walled, six-foot fences. And that's not how you build a neighborhood, that's not how you build a community.
So this addresses fence safety. What are you proposing?
It's part of it, unfortunately, because they include in the height. And I get that they were trying to simplify it, but I would suggest instead maybe keep the, which is, by the way, national standard, six-foot height for all fences that are on a flat terrain or level terrain, and then allow seven feet for anything that's non-standard or sloped. And I also think that because we don't regulate the materials that can be used to build a fence, especially solid fence, that maybe we should consider limiting the height in the front of residence instead of just leaving it up to a deed restriction or an HOA covenant. Sorry, to create extra work, everyone.
Yeah, so looking at the, I'm just looking at the marked up codes. So that would be, which section would be?
252-899, Section D is where the height is. I think this could probably be tacked, all of it could be tacked on under there, defining the height limits.
I'm seeing 252-899.
D.
It looks like in this, I'm looking at the backup. Oh, okay, I see, D.
Yeah, so they've crossed out average. So what it was is a before average height of six feet. So if you have a slope, like a really high slope, you can make up towards the top of the fence like only like four feet, and then down at the bottom of the slope, you could make it like eight feet. As long as, once it's all said and done and every plank is measured, the overall total was seven feet. So it's a really complicated way to go about building a fence and measuring from a co-compliance standpoint. This would make it a little simpler. You go with seven feet for anything on a slope, six feet for anything that's not. And then maybe, I don't know, you could go with three and a half or three for front yards and?
Okay, let's do.
If people even want to consider that one, I just?
So what I recommend is we, when we get to the point where there's a motion, is make a motion on kind of the base, and we can build amendments to that base motion. So, yes, we'll, typically what we do is staff recommendation, and then we add amendments and vote on those. Sounds like we have a few things we'd like to propose. Commissioner Azar, is our parliamentarian, do you have a?
I was just going to say I'll make a motion to move ahead with staff recommendation.
Okay. Are we done with questions?
Yeah, that was mostly my concern.
So let's go ahead. So we have a motion for staff recommendation. It's kind of our base. Do I have a second for that? Okay, thank you. So do we have any amendments proposed that, to the base motion?
I would move to make the amendments suggested by Chair Cohen.
So let's clearly articulate. I'll put Commissioner Cohen on the hook for stating the amendment because?
Okay, I would write it as, "A solid fence constructed along a property line may not exceed six feet on flat terrain and seven feet if there is a sloped grade." And by the way, guys, thank you all so much for this, because I hate fence cases. Like, they're just, they take up way too much time for what they are.
So, and we'll see if a commissioner takes acceptance amendment. I think Commissioner Conley was interested. May I add, I think we need staff to clarify the flat versus sloped. So I would just add, with staff would, go ahead.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, I am now hearing it. I'm in complete solidarity with the intent of the amendment. I am concerned that this definition of flat versus sloped might take us down a very complex rabbit hole. Can we send the recommendation as staff has it with notes or comments? And just include those separately?
Yeah, I was thinking just have them work on the definition. Leave it to staff to define what slope.
It's 12 inches.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So it is defined already?
Yes, that's in code, right? Yeah.
The, it is two feet difference.
Two feet difference, okay.
Okay, well, if it's already defined and that's simple enough, then I accept it.
So we'll go ahead, that's an amendment. We have a second, well, we have Commissioner Conley taking that up as a motion. Do we have a second to this amendment? Commissioner Maxwell, do we have any, do we need any discussion? Are there any objections to this recommended amendment? Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Conley.
I'll go ahead and use this spot to just make a brief comment that isn't a question about this, which is, I acknowledge the need for fence safety, and I appreciate the work that staff has done on this. And I am in full support of fence safety. But it seems like this is a small, very important, but small piece of a larger conversation about antisocial design elements that are currently being incorporated in our neighborhoods, and that lead to a general feeling of unwelcomingness that make the streetscape less walkable and less pleasant. And I think there needs to be a broader conversation about fencing walls in our neighborhoods in general. And so I would just like to say that while I fully support moving forward with this, I hope that, you know, in the future, I think there's a lot of very pressing things we need to do on our codes. You know, at some point in the future, when we can, I would like us to be able to have a broader conversation about, you know, safety features in our housing design that affect the streetscape and the neighborhood.
Okay, anybody else want to speak on this before we take a vote?
Yeah, I just wanted to second all of that. I live in a neighborhood that's seen a rapid amount of change and can see visually the exact impact we're talking about. So as we do move forward with these wonderful recommendations that are obviously clearly needed, we also should be thinking about the bigger context. And as I mentioned, maybe some unintended consequences of the current regulations and how we can think more broadly about what fencing looks like in our actual neighborhoods.
Okay.
Chair, again, we don't, as of now, we don't limit fence height in the front of houses. But if y'all wanted to address that in another form of an amendment, I think now would be the time, right, parliamentarian?
Well, let's, so we have, okay, I think we have an amendment that I think is pretty clear if, unless, is it everybody clear? Do we, is there, do we want to have more discussion on this amendment?
Chair, I saw Commissioner Woods raise her hand. I'm not sure if she needed a clarification.
Yes.
I just want a point of clarification that we're voting on the amendment, and there will be an opportunity to add additional amendments?
Yes, we're voting on this one amendment. We will vote on it, and then we will go down and entertain other amendments. I have one, there may be others. I just want to make sure the height limitation, do we need to look at that now in this amendment? Or can we consider that separately? Because you?
And that's where I'm not sure whether, I mean?
Chair, I would, can I, can I suggest something as a parliamentarian? I would recommend splitting those motions, just so we're clear on the different pieces and elements that we're voting on.
Okay. So is everyone clear on the amendment? Commissioner Conley, seconded by Commissioner Maxwell. We've had discussion on it. Are we ready to vote? Okay, I think we are. Well, let me just say this, is there any opposition to this amendment? All right, no opposition, then we're going to go and, it passes. It'll be added to the base motion. So let's go on. I wanted to, now that they're on the historic item, and I need?
Chair, I had a?
Commissioner?
I had a motion to that as well. Do you want to just, before you make a motion, maybe you can lay out what you were thinking, and I can lay out what I'm thinking, then we can discuss what makes sense.
If you are speaking to the work you did on the Codes and Ordnances, please go ahead, because you were there. So I'll let you take the lead.
I appreciate that, Chair. I was trying to sort of align with the new language, and here's what I would recommend. So I would say that we amend 25-2-899 subsection H1B, where it says that follows historical design standards. And I would say "and complies" with subsection H3, and then continue. So my new language would be "and complies" with subsection H3. And that subsection is where we essentially say that you cannot have spike pickets, you cannot have vertical pickets, razor wire, and things like that. So we would be saying, you follow historic design standards, but also at the same time comply with the safety standards laid out in this ordinance.
Okay, that seems like a much simpler thing than what I'm reading here in the backup. So do we have a, is everybody clear on this amendment? Do I have a second? Commissioner Woods, are you seconding this? Okay, all right, any discussion needed?
Chair, can I just quickly speak to it?
Sure.
I do understand staff is trying to understand how the historical standards work. And, you know, we have staff that works towards that. So yes, I would leave it to them to figure it out. I think the hope at the Codes and Ordnances was that you can follow those historic design standards. So if a picket fence of a certain kind is required, you can do that, but hopefully still follow the safety standards. So we maybe do not have the raised sections above. Essentially, something that captures the essence of that historic standard while also complying with the safety guidelines laid out in this ordinance. That's the hope of this motion.
Okay, any other discussion on this item before we vote on this amendment? All right, are there, we had a second. So are there any objections to this, adding this amendment to the base motion? All right, seeing none, I think Commissioner Woods, did you, you seemed interested in adding an amendment? Do you have anything?
That was it.
That was it, okay, so it was the historic item? Okay, all right. Any other improvements? I'm looking around.
Chair, Commissioner Layson and Andrew Rivera, if we could please pause.
Okay, oh, we are. We're at the minimum.
We're good. Please proceed.
My apologies, I just had to cough.
Well, I just want to clarify, we need seven, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, so we've got the base and the two amendments. Any additional changes that we'd like to entertain?
I think we would like to also consider some thoughts on front fencing. And I'm going to defer to our expert on the BOA for some suggestions on this.
Let me, let me just check. Point of order, is this in line with council direction? Because they laid out a specific, I mean, in their resolution. Are we within that? Do we think we're within that council direction? Or does it matter?
Could you please repeat the?
So council directed the city manager to evaluate requiring flat-top styles on new fences at all lengths, applying flat-top fence requirements to all fences of six feet tall or lower, applying flat-top fence requirements to substantial fence repairs or remodeling of 50% or more of an existing fence. So there's a resolution out there. We can make recommendations, so I don't think this is outside of what we can do. Just asking.
Chair, I believe that's within your purview.
All right.
And Chair, if I may, I think the intent behind it was the safety of the fence. Where, if I had to make a guess, and it's nothing against staff, this was probably just a good opportunity to clean up a really kind of badly-written piece of the code.
Okay, so what's the amendment proposed?
I can't make amendments, but I would, I would advise that if you were going to make an amendment, maybe 40 inches, I think, while still being compliant with whatever the transportation code says as far as fence setback and blocking views from corner right-of-way.
All right, so, and this is, this would be along the?
The swimming pool code would require a minimum of 48 inches in height.
Forty-eight?
Forty-eight, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so there's 48, I think.
Forty-eight inches.
There's a minimum of 48 for a front?
For a front.
Okay.
For, I'm sorry, are we passing a max or a min? I mean, what are we doing?
It would be a max, so you don't end up with a six or seven-foot fence in the front.
So it's a max of 48 is the current code?
For a swimming pool code, it requires a minimum of 48 inches in height.
Yeah.
Swimming pool, okay. But we're not?
We're not, we were not limited to.
Okay. All right, everybody has to stay on the stand view here, virtually. We're down seven. Okay. So this is front fence, but we're not talking about fences that are surrounding pools, are we? What's the?
No, I think the question was exactly regarding front fencing being, have, using this opportunity to maybe clarifying what is permitted as a good front fence. And I think we're trying to think through the right way to put this in as an amendment.
Maybe 60 inches might be most palatable to council.
Yeah.
Might be realistically approved.
Yes.
Even though I think it's a little tall personally, but?
Yeah.
That way it still offers privacy and protection for animals and children.
So we're saying a max?
Yeah.
So I?
A max of 60 inches?
Yeah, the amendment would be a max, 60 inches in the front section?
Yeah, and?
Taking into consideration?
There's going to be some interesting nuances there because it's going to depend on the lot itself, and which is actually deter, or where's the house facing?
Yes.
Okay, so, so we could, to keep this brief, we could ask staff to look at?
Front facing, I think that's using a minimum of 60.
Yeah.
Yes, and taking into consideration pools, like safety regulations now.
We could keep it high level, we don't need to.
I think that's great.
Okay.
Chair, I'm sorry, I want to make a recommendation quickly.
Yes, please.
Rather than doing front, we could just do street-facing.
Oh, there we go. There we go, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Azar.
So state the amendment, and we'll see if we get a second. Commissioner Maxwell, you want to take the lead?
I'd like to propose an amendment regarding street-facing fencing being set at a maximum of 60 inches and taking into consideration transportation-related concerns as well as pool safety. And that staff would review that.
Okay, are we clear on the amendment? Commissioner Howard, you had your hand up? We can't hear you.
That's right.
Okay.
I was just, I was given the second.
Okay, you're given the second, great, all right. So we've got a second. Any discussion on this item in the interest of time? Just looking at, we're at 9:30. Do we have any discussion on this? If we can get through this, it'd be great. Okay, all right. So we have a, any objections to this amendment? This will be our third, and it's a good one. Seeing no objections, so we have three amendments. Any additional amendments to the base? All right, I think we just need, I'm looking at a parliamentarian. Do we need a quick vote on the base and the three amendments to wrap this up?
Yes, we do, except we have not taken for or against on the base motion yet.
So we approve the amendments, and now we have to?
Yes, thank you. Do we need any debate discussion on the base motion? All right, Commissioner Azar, please.
I'll make a quick comment. I hear staff's concern about applying this to fences when you're rehabbing past 50%. I do see the affordability impacts and sort of monitoring impacts of that and how that might be challenging. I just do feel like it's an important thing to say that not only does it apply to new fences, but if you're going to rehab your existing fence, you should apply these. Because truly, it is a question of safety here that we're talking about. It was also what was recommended in council resolution. So I'm glad to see it's in the base here. We're voting ahead with that, against staff's recommendation. I just do want to honor what staff is saying here. But I do think from a safety perspective, it makes sense that if we go for a rehab of more than 50%, that these rules should apply.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion for and against on the base motion? All right, then what we're voting on now, we've got the three amendments. They've been? All right, uh, then what we're voting on now, we've got the three amendments, they've been, uh, approved, so we're voting on the base with the three amendments. Uh, let's go ahead and take a vote, those on the, well, I'll say, any objection, we'll make this easy to passage of, uh, the base and three, three amendments. Seeing no objection, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. So that's all our discussion cases this evening. Let me catch up, we'll try to get, get us out of here before 10, or can. All right. Okay, um, we have item 24 nomination, is this right? What's, uh, yes, nominations, and I'm missing 24 here. Items from the commission, we don't have any, is that this evening? Okay, uh, I...